Yeah, it's time. Are we good, Josh?
I'm checking.
I can hear you.
Great.
All right, welcome. Welcome, Steve remotely. Welcome everyone else to the Lincolnville Select Board meeting. It is the 27th of December. Great, it is 6:00 PM. And Josh, would you care to read the quote of the evening, please?
I'd be happy to. "There are some things you learn best in calm and some in storm." Willa, Kathar.
Thank you. And just a reminder to the board and everyone else, because we do have Selectman Hand participating remotely, any action by the board will be taken via poll. All right? And at this point, I would like to open the podium, virtual or otherwise, because I do see we have some remote participants for the Citizens Forum for any non-agenda-related No one remotely raising their hand? All right, well, let's move along to the Administrator's report, please.
Just a reminder that dog licenses all expire at the end of the year. You can renew them online here at the town office. The Selectmen's email accounts are actually done, ready to go. You will, at some point, receive a little note from me that'll give you your login and your password, and then woohoo!
Okay.
Remote in and check that or respond whenever you need to. You've had left on your workspots, and Steve hopefully received by email, an amended discussion or many things regarding Agenda Item 7, which we'll go over when we get to Agenda Item 7, but I want to make sure you all have it. Also wanted to make a request at the end of the meeting that the board consider having a brief, well, it could be as long as you want, executive session
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Sorry? Regarding a potential legal issue. Fire station security cameras are installed. We haven't yet have the training on it, but we're hoping to get that soon after the new year. And then, obviously, we had a storm last week that caused us a little bit of a hiccup in time and effort. Appreciate everyone's efforts in helping us get put back together. Couple of things, we ended up having to close the town office Friday afternoon when the power went off. The automatic generator, well, the automatic part worked, but the generator did not. We made a call to our generator technician, who was not local but was here within about an hour and 15 minutes or so. He wasn't quite sure how quick or soon he'd respond. The battery had, didn't have enough juice to make it turn over, so we replaced the Happens, worked fine after that. We've got a little bit of a mess at Beach Parking Lot, which we're going to get the worst of it off this week. And then, we always do a spring cleanup anyhow, so spring cleanup will get the remainder. We do have a substantial pile of debris at Duck Trap, which, not quite sure whether or not we should wait to see if we get some more storms, or clean it up now and then get some more storms and clean it up again. It does inhibit or prohibit the parking, so probably if we can get the right people, get it cleaned up now, or most of it now. And outside of that, in the agenda, I think that's all I have to report.
Okay, any questions for our town administrator? All right, seeing none, let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise. The Planning Board meets tomorrow, February, ah, wish for thinking. Planning Board meets tomorrow, Wednesday, December 28, 7:00 PM. The town office will be closed in observance of the New Year's Day on Monday, January 2nd. The Budget Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, January 3rd, 6:00 PM. And the Select Board meets next on Monday, January 9, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Is there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? All righty. Let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 12th of December.
I move with the board approved the December 12, 2022, meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Late, seconded by Selectman Garrettson. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Late, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Ray, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Hand, what's your vote?
Yes.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes, motion passes. Thank you all. And moving along, we have quite a few things that I understand Selectman Garrettson, or rather Chair Garrettson of the Broadband Committee will be presenting tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Excellent, well, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Let me first get situated here. My plan is to share my screen and use Zoom to do that. Okay, so I first want to just start by asking if there are any burning questions about the Lincolnville Internet Planning Report. Okay, so seeing none, I'm not going to go through every single line, but I'll first just talk quickly. So this feasibility study was solicited by the Town of Lincolnville in 2021. It was finished around August, but we held back on giving a presentation so we could, so the town could speak with LCI beforehand, and we could include the recommendations on LCI in the report. So in this study, we were looking at where Lincolnville should go to close the digital gap, because there are hundreds and hundreds of residents here that don't have the same internet service that we all should have. And so, we first looked at all the different options that we could pursue. One of them was to work with LCI. The next was to build out our own system. And another was to partner with Red Zone to put up 5G cell repeaters around town. And so, we turned, we decided that Red Zone didn't make, let's see if, go to that. Well, we decided that Red Zone didn't make sense, because it was a proprietary technology that perhaps in five, 10 years would be obsolete, and we'd have to start all over again. So if we were going to put our money into building a system, it should be something that's future-proof, that we could rely on working for the next 20 to 40 years. With that, we looked at building out our own system. And at first, the number was around $3 million to build out a system that would reach every home in Lincolnville. Now, I am looking for this total number down here. But after Mark Rilette, our consultant that wrote the study, ran the latest numbers, it went up to $6 million. And I was willing to fight for and defend a $3 million number, but $6 million was just too far. And so, after that, we all sort of decided, okay, we have to work with LCI. What are the best ways to partner with them? What are the conceptions that we would like to see from LCI? And the biggest one was cost, unsurprisingly. LCI, it's a very long study. LCI still has perhaps one of the most expensive fiber services for the speed in the country. Three of the items that we were looking at, though, have already been addressed by the company. That's a symmetrical service. Originally, they only offered 50 over 10 or 100 over 20. Now they offer 100 over 100 as a starting speed. The second was, they required that you had a phone line bundled with your internet service, and that's now been dropped. And the third one was, I believe, a three-year subscription. And now, my understanding is there's no one-year contract required. So already, we've accomplished those three things. I'm not sure how much we had to do with it, frankly, but those are now three things that Lincolnville residents can have that higher speed and that lower price. So ultimately, the study, I think, was well worth it. We needed to go through this process to understand what our options were in Lincolnville. And we came to the conclusion that working with LCI really is our best and only option. One thing that is encouraging is this new line of grants that are from the MCA. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to partner with LCI in the February round for a reach-me line extension program. That basically covers the Axiom feasibility study. Does anyone else on the Broadband Committee want to speak to this? I guess not.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Questions from the board for Josh as the Broadband? Sure, okay.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, all right, great. Thank you for that, Josh.
Welcome. Okay, so let's move on, and I apologize for my voice, I'm getting over a cold. Let's move on to the more important document, I would argue, because we actually can take steps to implement it. And that is the Digital Equity and Digital Inclusion Plan. So I want to start by reading the preface. "The Lincolnville Broadband Committee could not have written this plan without the skilled guidance of the National Digital Equity Center. Starting with NDEC's planned template and detailed data collection, the committee carefully reviewed initial drafts and incorporated Lincolnville-specific characteristics to yield a final plan that reflects both the NDEC's expertise and local priorities. This plan is a living document intended to chart a long-term effort to bridge the digital divide in our community. Committee intends to engage our residents in an ongoing conversation on the best strategies and methods to make internet access in Lincolnville more equitable and inclusive. We fully expect those conversations, as well as selected pilot initiatives, to help us understand what works and what does not, and to update this plan accordingly. The Lincolnville Broadband Committee." So I want to first try your attention to page six. I think we all learned interesting demographic data about our community. 4% of the population has a family median income of less than $10,000, 7% with an income of $10,000 to $19,999, and 10% with an income of $20,000 to $35,000. 53% of our population is 50 years or older, and there are approximately 921 year-round homes in Lincolnville, and we estimate there's around 481 seasonal homes. So what are we asking to do in this plan? I'm going to run through the highlights. Number one is to create an awareness campaign for residents to alert them of the FTC Affordable Connectivity Program and to help them access free classes to help sign up for the program. I'll just kind of run down to the cost, basically. There are a number of strategies for this goal. We want to hold classes in Lincolnville so people can learn how to apply for the ACP program. It's free money, so it's really something every resident should know about. Launch a pilot project and recruit volunteers to help sign up for this. And if the board and the community are willing to fund it, to raise funds to pay the $100 broadband installation fee for up to 100 low-income households. This is something we could also try to talk with LCI about to see if they would be willing to waive that fee. And so, the committee recommends requesting $10,000 for these items in the FY 2023 municipal Number two is to offer a distribution center and delivery system to process and aid residents One strategy is to raise funds and facilitate access to an affordable equipment program and/or organizations that provide affordable equipment. The second strategy would be to launch a telehealth project for older residents by providing them with tablets to connect with their healthcare providers. For this, we are recommending seeking $8,257 from public and private grants, and that a future broadband committee could perform the grant research process. Number three is to make the Lincolnville Community Library the go-to spot for all things digital, including onsite digital skills classes and free Wi-Fi access. So for this one, advertise the locations of community hotspots and available free Wi-Fi locations. Strategy two would be to add additional community Wi-Fi hotspots at the Town Wharf and at Lincolnville Beach. I think we're pretty well covered in the center. We have the general store, we have the town office, we have the library, but the beach is certainly a big black hole when it comes to free internet access. So we recommend the committee that we seek $9,500 for these items from public and private grants, and that a future broadband committee could perform the grant research process. So like a previous one, perhaps, LCI could donate the bandwidth to run that community hotspot. That would be great if they're listening, if they want to do that. Please, please. Number four would be to, is to create a community advocate ecosystem that can help raise digital equity and digital inclusion awareness. This has a number of strategies. First one is to connect community advocates with the NDEC for their free volunteer training and other main initiatives. Establish a volunteer program at the Lincolnville Community Library to offer technology support to residents. Raise funds to hire and support a part-time digital navigator to assist in digital inclusion efforts for the town. And number four, to conduct a digital equity and inclusion survey, which is attached to this plan. The cost for this, we recommend seeking $19,161 for these items from public and private grants, and that a future broadband committee can perform the grant research process. And we keep saying that last part to let the Select Board know, we don't expect the Select Board to suddenly go on this intensive grant research process. The hope is that a future committee would be doing that heavy lifting, and then coming to the board and presenting those options. Number five, keeping up with other towns, the state, and the world while enjoying a quality of place. The goal here would be to facilitate and inform families and homes about the importance of digital equity and digital inclusion with a public awareness campaign. We recommend mailing flyers to all homes with available digital equity resources. Advertise on the town's Facebook page and the Google bulletin board. Update the town's website with digital equity and digital inclusion resources, and email residents with digital equity and digital inclusion resources. Strategy two is to recruit volunteers and/or facilitators to help residents sign up for the FTC Affordable Connectivity Program benefit. And the committee recommends requesting $3,940 for these items in the FY 2023 municipal budget. And all these things are laid out in greater detail when you go down to page... Let's see, I want to just put out one more thing. Oh yeah, just that, yeah, there's all this great information about Lincolnville residents. I'll go through it all, it's pretty exhaustive. And then, page 37 has a survey that if the town wanted to send this out either digitally, through the mail, or both, we've got this great survey to gather more information about Are there any questions on this, this plan?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, 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 I got a question. I was just wondering on number, your goal number one is to, you mentioned that would be a $10,000 ask from the town.
Yeah.
In the budget. Do you guys talk about having, doing that from ARPA funds, or do you think the town should be carving out something different?
We actually did not get into specifically if it should come from ARPA funds or from raising taxes. So that would be up to the Select Board.
Gotcha. I didn't know if there was any discussion about that. The other question I have is I took on number, oh, I had it here. Oh, yep, that's also on number one, where you talk about for the 10 grand, which were people who could get $100 installations, 100, 100 installations, something like that.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned perhaps negotiating with LCI for lower costs. If what, the town can work to get them a higher take rate? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If possible. That seems, yeah, it seems like a stretch, but we certainly recommending, we recommend advocating for trying to get a lower monthly bill from LCI, it doesn't hurt to ask.
So, yeah, so I'm just curious, did you guys talk about or come up with any scenarios, plans, how best to work without, if it could, if it would come to that, how you might be working with LCI to increase their take rate? Or, and then lower a few, couple, few of their options, like the 100, 100, or installation cost, or monthly cost?
I don't believe we talked specifically about that.
Yeah.
Unless I'm, it's going to be.
So there'd need to be like more of a conversation of, this is how this would help. Obviously, we know how it would help the residents, but I think probably there needs to be a deeper conversation as to how it would help LCI, why would advantage, disadvantage for them to partner or somehow negotiate with us on that?
Right.
Yeah, there'd need to be a deeper conversation.
Yeah, I would guess not.
Yep.
That's a way.
Josh, do you want to invite?
Yes, please.
Steve up to share the podium?
Come on.
Do you have anything really to, oh, you're asking Colty? Yeah, we.
I'm Stephen Colty, I live in Lincolnville, Maine, and I'm on the Broadband Committee. I think one of the things that's important, particularly with Selectman Late's question about what we have to offer LCI, why they should be interested in working with us, as I think everyone knows, Maine received $250 million of federal funding for broadband, which is managed by the Maine Connectivity Authority, the MCA. Almost all of the grant funds, and many of the grant funds we refer to in here presume that we have access or we can apply for some of that money. There's a very substantial amount of money. Most of the funding opportunities require, or to put it differently, give preferential treatment to joint public-private partnership proposals. So the town of Lincolnville, while it has no regulatory or statutory authority with respect to LCI, does have the ability to either agree or not agree to jointly apply for what will be fairly significant amounts of money. And so, one of the things that, you know, the Select Board is going to be the entity that will conduct these negotiations. But one of the things that we are suggesting that the Select Board keeps in mind is this ability, this carrot. And so, you know, having said that, I hope it makes it, you know, less theoretical, because the money, and by the way, of the $250 million Maine is to get, half of that is already here on deposit. So this is actual real money from the infrastructure bill. It's not subject to being clawed back. That's definitely happening, and we just want to make sure that our community gets our fair share.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something to add to that?
I did not. Mr. Colty covered exactly what I was going to add.
Okay, thank you, great. All right, Josh.
And I guess I'll pump up the postcard from my desk.
Put your, put your other hat on of Selectmen now?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to leave Zoom meeting.
So I'm wondering, would this be an appropriate time to simply thank everybody on the Broadband Committee for all the work they've done in getting these reports to us?
Sure, I don't see why not.
Well, if I haven't thanked them yet, I have time to now.
I think Josh does have a final piece of.
Prema sure, Mike. Maybe prema sure, I may want to, yeah, not thank you all.
Gratitude, no, gratitude is always in season.
Yeah, okay. I take that back. That's right. Let's see what you have to say, Josh.
Oh, boy. So the final piece, and please excuse the typo at the very end, that should say December 31st, 2023, is a draft charge for a new committee, since this is the end of the Lincolnville Broadband Committee, as we like to call it, version three, right, we're on three. And this new committee would be the Digital Equity and Digital Inclusion Committee. And really, the charge would be implementing the Digital Equity and Digital Inclusion Plan as attached. I thought about writing out every single thing from the plan, but that seemed a bit redundant when it's laid out in such great detail in the plan itself. A year seems like a realistic amount of time. I think we would need at least a year to implement everything in the plan, perhaps more, but start with that. And then, in terms of laying out a timeline for all, for all the different components, at this point, that feels arbitrary, like I wouldn't know where to begin in terms of laying out the specific timelines of number one, two, and three. They all seem to, seems, yeah, I think we would sort of have to see how it, how it went once that committee was formed.
This may come across as a foolish question, but there's, obviously, there's power in words, and so, the transitioning from the Broadband Committee to specifically the Digital Equity and Inclusion Committee feels important to the Broadband Committee to propose this as opposed to just continuing on as the Broadband Committee with this focused effort. effort.
Yeah. Yeah, that was certainly intentional, um, because the mission has, has radically changed, right? The broadband committee, uh, version 1.0 in twenty, no, end of 2019 even, um, was to look at the different options for how we should get our internet here in Lincolnville. And we sort of view that as a, as an answered question that's been put to bed. And so now the only role for a committee, um, is to get people more connected to, to that service. Um, whereas expanding, um, the access in terms of, of, of the build out is really now in the lap of the select board. Um, so we view a future committee's, um, charge is very narrow and can laser focused on that. And there are members of, of the broadband committee that are interested in serving on that. Not everyone, so certainly need to, um, look for more people to serve on that future committee. If the, if the select board approves the charge, I think we could, we could gather a, a lot of different people that are not so much interested in recommending ideas to the select board, but rather directly being in the trenches to help out their residents, their neighbors, their friends to have these resources. So hopefully we'll be able to draw on that, um, to, to find more people to help out. And I think we will.
I can certainly see the efficacy of having, um, it be an official town effort. Um, has the committee discussed essentially evolving this into a citizens group or some kind of partnership with our library to carry it forward into the future once some of these um, structural elements and grant funded opportunities are, are cemented. Um. Yeah. Has, has the broadband committee discussed that idea at all?
We didn't. Because there's grant funding involved, it just seems like it should be under the auspices of the, of the select.
Yeah, initially, but you know, certainly reading the report, it's like, oh, this is not a short term effort, you know, and it, and it seems like once some of the, um, really structural aspects, um, are, um, in place that, you know, it might be something to consider to, you know, look to create some sort of citizen-driven group or partnership with the library so that it can kind of take on its own life.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah. And the, and the library is, uh, is interested in partnering with the town on this. Um, they don't want to over commit too much because just limited staff resources.
Sure.
Um, but they are certainly open to us holding classes there.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. Arlene and I, uh, on the committee, we did meet with the, uh, library board, uh, to, to bring them up to speed to what was going on on the committee. Um, they were hesitant at first as far as understanding what was going on. Was it going to overburden them? Uh, but they were very excited as they learned, uh, what we were, what was being proposed. Um, and I think you're spot on lately as far as long-term, uh, the, the idea, and it's called out in the, in the plan, is that the library would be at the center of, of, uh, not just figuratively in town, but literally is in this program, be a, a core part of it two, five years down the road.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just to, to add some more color to that because this is, um, it can sound very overwhelming, um, and, and like there's a lot of moving parts going forward. So I just want to, um, make that a little clearer. Um, uh, the committee spoke to the library, spoke to the hospital about telehealth, spoke to the, uh, school about, uh, classroom space for these training programs, as well as the possible, um, help desks for people to sign up for the $30 a month federal broadband benefit that you have to apply for. Um, all of those are, were very positive conversations. Everyone was very interested. Um, the telehealth um, piece is extremely, um, important, uh, partly given the age of our community or average age of our residents, but also frankly, because of, um, set aside funds just for telehealth. So there are subsections of this, just as there was early money for schools and, uh, families with, uh, students at home, so too is there now money set aside for telehealth. Um, I think the, the second thing I want to say is that, um, I do want to disclose that I am a member of the board of the National Digital Equity Center, um, which is the entity that conducted the study and is also the entity that would be providing things like the training and managing the digital navigators. The, the, the NDEC, the National Digital Equity Center, um, which is based in Wiscasset, Maine, um, has emerged, um, I think it's fair to say, as a national leader in digital equity and has a number of programs. The, the head of the organization, Susan Corbett, who was our consultant, lead consultant on the digital equity and inclusion piece, um, is a, is a member of the, of the, of the federal, uh, digital equity board. So we're, uh, very proud to have a Mayner in that role. And, um, the programs that NDEC offers are all the things that are in this, um, recommendation and are already being offered in other communities in Maine. So there's nothing that we're talking about doing here that's new. Um, it's new to Lincolnville, but it is not new to Maine and it is certainly not new nationally. And we have, um, we're very lucky that we happen to have this Maine-based organization, um, you know, who, who, who's, who's very good at doing these programs. I say all of that, you know, with, with the disclosure that I'm on the board. It is a not-for-profit. My role is uncompensated. It's a giving opportunity for me, um, since they raise money from donations. Um, so, uh, it's a, it's a public service thing. Um, but I think that, I hope that it would, might give the select board some comfort that there's, you know, kind of a, a dancing partner for us on a lot of this stuff going forward. It's still a lot of work and the, um, grant application process, um, is, you know, heavy lifting. We've had some success with grants, although, you know, having stumbled along the way, but we did actually get some grant money for the work that's been done so far. And I'm optimistic that we would be able to continue to do that. So I just wanted to add that little bit.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anything else on this right now, Josh?
Um. I guess I would love to hear any hot takes from the board on, on the idea of, uh, funding some of these items in the FY 2023 budget.
So what exactly is a hot take?
Well, I think you sort of pointed to, to one of them. Yeah, with the ARPA funds.
Oh, yeah. Well, okay, let's move, yeah, along those lines. ARPA funds.
Okay.
Okay. That would certainly work with what you guys want to see happen or broadband that he wants to see happen. That's also what the ARPA funds were partially designed for. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And, uh, I don't see anybody else, I mean, in, in town clamoring for ARPA funds right now. That is, you're kind of first to the trough, not first, you're early to the trough. That would be my hot take. And trough is probably a unfortunate choice of words.
Trunk.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, along those lines, you know, that's where my mind goes immediately. And then of course, I would like further elaboration on, um, long-term costs, you know, kind of worst case scenarios. If some of these grants don't come through, you know, there's many dollars of aspirations in this which are great, but, you know, if a grant doesn't, just worst case scenario sort of things, um, what are the unintended consequences of committing to a particular program or aspects of this program that we could potentially in worst case scenario, um, be committing our taxpayers to, just so that we fully understand that scope. That's kind of that really theoretic, but big picture question. Yeah.
This is, this is great, by the way. Finding understandable, straightforward.
Professional.
Professional with, with ass, you know? And it's like Mike said, although the choice of words may not have been right, but, but it's, but it's, we know now what's coming at us. Um, obviously there's other things coming at us that we don't even know yet, but this is, this is really good. And it's not that big of an ask in my mind, really. And we've been, you know, our town has been screaming for this. Not only have we been talking about it for a fair amount of time, but the town has, has, has hurt because we didn't have what we need. So, um, yeah, I, I'm glad it's on the table. Um, it's all in how it's going to, to unfold and we all know that. Um, but, um, this gives me a lot to go on. It really does. And thank you for putting in the time. This is great.
Yeah. Thank you to everyone involved. Yeah. Steve?
As chairperson done stated, the, uh, we have to be cognizant of what some of these things could cost and unintended consequences is a great term to be, always be thinking about. Um, the committee did think long and hard about what items, uh, we chose, uh, to say fund versus raise, uh, grant money for with the specific purpose of, uh, thinking it through and saying if we don't receive grant funding for this, um, we would not do a certain thing. Um, so we were pretty much making them contingent on, there could always be a, a request to, to go beyond that, but, um, uh, the intention was, uh, to not move forward on items that we could not raise grant funds for.
Right.
Great. Thank you. Excellent. Uh, so anything else to discuss at this point?
Uh, I just want to thank the committee, uh, the broadband committee for putting in all this time, um, all these meetings to put together both of these wonderful, you know, the study and the plan. Um, I think it really is a, uh, a gift to the town. Uh, but if we ever wanted to build our own broadband network, we, we have some numbers on, at least in 2022, what that would cost. Um, but more importantly, how to close that digital divide here.
Yes. Yeah, I'm grateful for the clarity and all the work that went into that. Yeah, it's great. Anything else? Yeah, Steve?
So how should we move forward regarding the potential of creating this new recommended, uh, uh, committee so as to not lose the momentum of the people that are interested in, in being part of that?
Well, I guess the first question is, are, is there a majority of the board that's interested in looking at a, a more polished draft charge?
I certainly would be interested in that. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think the concept is sound. Um. And I think with consideration of this report and the timelines and the dollar figures, it could make sense to essentially evolve the broadband committee into a new entity.
Yeah.
And whether the chair of the broadband committee knows it or not, he's about, and maybe he already has, will be soon receiving a request for the fiscal year 23 budget, which obviously is pretty well documented in reports. He'd like attaching those.
Yeah.
Certain tables.
Yeah.
And whatnot. So we can actually include that in the first round of the.
Yeah.
Budget discussion so that come February, when you all get a draft budget, that can be in there and detailed out.
Yeah.
Um, some of the, some of the things, um, the committee could exist, but some of them going to need some funds too. So that's going to be a little bit of a gap or a lap, not a gap, yeah, it's a gap in the creation, but we don't, like somebody said, don't want to allow it to linger on in perpetuity because then interested parties become less interested.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. And thank you for the presentation, Josh, and thank you again.
Okay.
You could iterate your gratitude at this point.
It almost sounds, it sounds like I'd be fawning, but still, thanks, thanks, everyone.
A little bit of fawning sometimes.
Heck of a job.
Maybe there's not enough fawning in this, you know, this line of work. Okay. Um, moving along to agenda item number seven, and as David pointed out, there is a supplemental, um. Packet of information in here for us, um, regarding one of, thanks, Steve, uh, one of the items of consideration on the special town meeting warrant. David, do you want to speak to this at all?
So the, the supplemental packet is identical to what you have in the newsletter and is the enclosure in the packet. Uh, the only thing that, uh, has changed is, like person Garrettson very accurately pointed out, uh, we didn't include all the possible grant monies that, uh, could or should be coming to us from efficiency Maine and the nature conservancy. Um, we had looked at the one location as a loc, a site versus per plug. So, um, in essence, after we make all the changes, the, instead of a ask of 40, it's an ask of 29. So that's always moving in the right direction. You know, I'd be happy to explain the nitty gritty if that's all necessary. Otherwise, the warrant is identical to what you saw two weeks ago. And the budget committee is lined up for meeting next week on whatever warrant you folks want to move forward to them, if when at all.
Um, any thoughts from the board on these updated numbers for the EV chargers?
Um, I'll, I'll say definitely more expensive than I thought it would be originally. Um, I don't think there, if the plan was to fund 80% um, with, with these grants, the state of Maine needs to update those numbers. Um, having said that, and, and if, if we did have to raise 40,000 for these, I would have said, let's just, let's just not move forward with it. Um, with the full $18,000 grant, assuming we get that for appropriation of 29,000, um, if we're using the ARPA funds, uh, I still think that it is a worthwhile investment. Um, with these chargers, we can decide, the town can decide whether or not when someone plugs in, they're either getting that electricity for free or I'm not sure if there's even a cap of how much we can charge. Certainly want to, wouldn't want a price gouge, but we can at least cover our cost of estimated 2,500 a year, probably make more than that. Um, in a emergency situation, um, where we want, I don't, can't really perceive what it would be, but we could, as I said, we can, we could turn that price down to zero if we wanted to just get people charged up. Um, so that ability to dynamically change the pricing, I think, um, makes it, makes it worthwhile that it, that it could pay for itself in the future. But that's only part of it to me. It's, it's that it gives people an opportunity or another reason to come to Lincolnville. Um, as of right now, I don't think there's any public EV charger between, um, Camden and Belfast unless you come into the center and, and go to the general store. That's a, that's a pretty big gap. Um, it is concerning certainly to look at this picture. Um, however, these things are, are water, water resistant. I don't know their, their actual, um, waterproof rating. I would think knowing a storm like this was coming, we would want to, um, probably wouldn't have to, but would probably be a good, a good idea to cover it for the storm duration. Um, I. That's just my own thought, I haven't read that. I just thought that could be a pretty easy precaution, just to protect it. Long way of saying that I, I think it's, it still makes, makes a lot of sense for our town to move forward with them.
Thoughts from the rest of the board?
I just, I, it's, it's a worthwhile consideration. I, I can't argue that. It gets people in, in town, and, you know, that's, that's a no-brainer. I just, I'm just not sure we've got the right area for it. I just, in the, in the environment that's down there, whether you cover it or not, things happen next to the saltwater, you know? And I, I just think we're gonna have maintenance issues. And I had, and I, and that's my own personal opinion. I haven't even, I haven't solicited any information from anybody to, you know, change my mind on that or solicit that. But I just, plus, plus we're struggling with parking spots, you know? We're struggling with that on a daily, yearly basis. And I don't know, I don't know. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent in yet on this.
Yeah, no, I would, I would echo Josh's recommendation that we go forward with this. Partly, I, I, I have no problem making the recommendation to the legislative body, to the town meeting, and letting them make the final call whatsoever. I think there are a lot, like I, like we had previous items come to us for previous, for earlier town meetings. I kind of feel as if this board just carries things forward and then lets the body decide. And I think it's appropriate to carry this warrant and let the body decide. I tend to think that it's a good idea, as Josh said, to have these things there. The idea of maintenance, whatnot, I, I do wish the, the recommendation from the electrician that we got would have addressed just that, just that point. How weatherproof can you make, are these things? I'm on board with recommending this, might go to a town meeting.
Can I just ask David a quick technical question?
Sure.
Did, did Hestram Electric mention any concerns about the site of it?
Not that they conveyed to me. I think, you know, the, the charges themselves are obviously made to be out in the weather. I mean, they're countrywide out in the weather. That, excuse me, that location is potentially a little bit harsh, but it'd be a good test at our, at our peril. But, I mean, it, it wouldn't, I don't see it any harsher than some of the environment we have exposed at the pier. Now, with the pier, we go down in a storm event and throw the breaker. So we'd have to notify somebody that, you know, probably charge point that they're kicking it offline, but so.
I guess that could be as simple as, as flipping the, our own.
Right.
The new service.
Right, we would go to the, to the panel that will be next to the meter or in the, in the border party building, or whatever you want to call that, and throw the switch, so that we don't have something electrified on and exposed. Certainly, we have experienced, I would say, an accelerated deterioration of some of our electrical equipment at the pier, just because it's in that saltwater environment. But what do you do?
It hasn't been infrequent.
No, it's a, you know, nothing, no, no location's perfect. You could put it in the town office parking lot and somebody could hit it. You know, you just don't know what's gonna occur. Ideally, it would be, you know, elevated ten feet or a hundred feet back from the shore, but we don't have a location that's, that meets that qualification, so.
Steve, did you want to chime in before I threw my two cents in?
Sure. I was, my jaw hit the floor when I saw the, the forty thousand dollar price. And it's, it's risen off the floor a little bit at the twenty-nine. So that's my primary consideration, or concern, I should say, is, is this twenty-nine thousand dollars that makes sense overall? And with everything that's in front of us. That aside, I don't have the concern regarding the unit being on, on the beach. I made this comment as, as this was coming about over the last couple of weeks to electrician. And their comment was, yeah, go to every marina, and there's electric ports all through the marina to charge boats and stuff. And they turn, they turn them off and bad storms come through. But otherwise, it's, it's, it's usually not, not much of an issue. So I have less of a concern there, but my, my primary concern's just on the cost.
Yeah, and I guess I would echo what Steve said. You know, largely, I'm thinking about the really excellent conversation we had at the Board Priorities Workshop. And I wa, I didn't attend the meeting. I was not here when the board had the initial discussion about this. But I don't feel that both in the cost and the timing of the project, I think it is a very worthy project, but I don't feel that it is in keeping with the tenor of the conversation that we had regarding board priorities and affording things in our town. The ARPA Fund well is not a bottomless well. And, you know, partic, it, it brings it into greater contrast for me now, having heard your excellent presentation regarding the digital equity and inclusion plan. You know, I look at where those funds can go and how they can provide the greatest good for both our community and visitors to our community. And I don't know that I can be completely supportive of spending this much money on this project with the hopes that the grants will come through. You know, that's the other piece of it for me is, as well as we are asking our taxpayers to afford this piece of infrastructure for infinity, for however long we have these charging stations. So I, I think the timing, the timing, just the way it's all shaken out, I think unfortunately, it's just, I can't be supportive of putting this forward in this way at this time, right now, at this special town meeting. Despite it being, I mean, obviously, it's, it's a great idea, other than the fact that the batteries are full of coal, which is problematic. But we won't get into slave labor here tonight. So what does the board want to do? We've, we've, we've got the entire rainbow of thoughts and opinions on Article Number Five specifically. So, yeah.
Well, so I, I think the timing is just fine. We, it would be one thing to call a special town meeting specifically for Article Five. So because there's four other articles, I don't think we're wasting anyone's time in terms of moving this to, to the voters. I wouldn't feel comfortable if, if we have the power to just approve this right now and not let the voters chime in. But that's not what, what we would be doing. We would be simply moving it to a special town meeting. And I certainly think that if, if we do decide to, to move Article Five to a special town meeting, that these concerns would be voiced. And so the townspeople would, would hear them, and they could make that decision whether or not they think this was a worthwhile use of ARPA funds. You know, by, I don't know, twenty, thirty-five? Like thirty? There's some, it could be that in the whole country, you can't, you couldn't manufacture gasoline cars. So we all know that electric cars are here and they're coming, and even greater numbers. These things won't go down in price. We don't know how much money there's gonna be for chargers like this in the future. So I feel like the research has been done, everything's lined up. We, we should just support this and, and see what, what the townspeople think about.
What sounds as if we are moving along the lines of having a vote to whether, on whether or not to recommend this article? Whether the board recommends Article Five?
Well, you actually have, not that you have to follow them, you do have some suggested motions. The first of which is, do you want to have a town meeting, a special town meeting? And when and where? And then the second was, which articles you wish to advance and at what cost? And then you have to set a special meeting to come back and approve the warrant after you get the Budget Committee recommendations, but.
Right. I just, I really want, you know, considering that we had no dollars really in mind, I wanted the board to be able to have a robust conversation about what we're asked, what we're putting our seal of approval on to put forward, if, if at all. Because for me, it's vastly different than what had been talked about in terms of dollars that we're looking to spend. So, so I just wanted to make sure that we have the conversation, that we're clear on where we are and that there's a general understanding of where, where the board is, not only on Article Five, but on the other articles also. Although I feel like those are not particularly negotiable in terms of things that we need to be able to afford.
I'll make a very non-controversial motion to set the special town meeting for Thursday, January twelfth, 2023, with a six P M. start time in the town office.
I'll second that.
Moved by Selectman Garrettson, seconded by Selectman Ray. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Can, can you say that again, Josh?
Sure. I move to set the special town meeting for Thursday, January twelfth, 2023, with a six P M. start time in town.
Yes.
Okay, Selectman Garrettson, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Ray, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Hand, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes, the motion passes. So do we have a second motion for the warrant articles?
Just got to jump in the middle of this. Obviously, if somebody wanted to do these individually, you're welcome, I mean, you're welcome to do that. We just, we as staff need direction so we can have the final warrant, get it to Budget Committee and get it back to you, so.
Yep. Well, and getting back to my previous point is, not that it's more efficient necessarily, but I feel like being presented with numbers tonight and then approving these articles, I feel like it's worthy for both the process, for whoever's out there listening, and moving into, you know, if Article Five gets moved forward to the special town meeting, that, you know, we're having a robust conversation, that's all. So I will entertain a first motion or a comprehensive motion?
I'd like to suggest we do it individually, sequentially.
Okay.
And so I will make a motion. I move that the board recommend approval of warrant Article Two with the appropriation amount shown in the latest draft warrant, and that the draft warrant be forwarded to the Budget Committee for the recommendation on Article Two.
Well done. Moved by Selectman Ray, seconded by Selectman Garrettson. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Ray, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Hand, what's your vote?
Yes.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes. We have the third article, does someone care to make a motion?
I move the board recommend approval of warrant Article Three with the appropriation amount shown in the latest draft warrant, and that the draft warrant be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their recommendation on Article Three.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Lake, seconded by Selectman Garrettson. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson?
Yes.
Selectman Ray?
Yes.
Selectman Hand?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes, motion passes. Thank you. Article Four.
I move the board recommend approval of warrant Article Four with the appropriation amount shown in the latest draft warrant, and that the draft warrant be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their recommendation on Article Four.
So moved by Selectman Lake.
Second.
Well seconded. I'll give that one to Selectman Ray, because I heard him first. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson?
Yes.
Selectman Ray?
Yes.
Selectman Hand?
Yes.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes. Article Five.
I move that the board recommend approval of warrant Article Five with the appropriation amount shown in the latest draft warrant, and that the draft warrant be forwarded to the Budget Committee for their recommendation on Article Five.
Moved by Selectman Garrettson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Selectman Ray. Is there further discussion after the already robust discussion? I feel like I would like for the record to reflect that my opposition is not in the EV chargers themselves. It's more about the appropriation of the, those funds from the Rescue Plan Act. Yeah, in the, in the particular timing. So just, I think it's a great idea. I just wish it could happen differently. But I hear your points, Josh, also about nothing's getting less expensive, so. Any other discussion points anyone wishes to bring up? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
No.
Selectman Garrettson, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Ray, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Hand, what's your vote?
No.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is no. So the motion fails. I will say, I think that this is a conversation that we should continue and look for further funding opportunities. I, I believe it is a worthy effort of the board to keep this conversation alive.
And for all we know, enough towns could complain to the state saying, hey, this didn't cover enough.
About their formula?
Yeah, that, that the amount could, could go up.
Yeah. All right, thank you, everybody, for all of your contributions to that conversation. And so there is a final piece of action that the board needs to take tonight, and I will entertain that motion.
I move that the board establish a special select board meeting for five P M. Wednesday, January fourth, 2023, to approve and sign the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Selectman Garrettson and Selectman Lake. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what is your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson?
Yes.
Selectman Ray?
Yes.
Selectman Hand?
Yes.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes, the motion passes. David, any final pieces to add to this before we move on in the agenda?
Nope, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next, before us, we have the Agreement for Services for the Heart and Soul Coach. David, do you want to add anything to this?
Sure, we've received, I think I've told, informed the board this. We have received. We have received our Community and Heart and Soul grant money. The next thing is we have to engage a coach that's been vetted by the Community Heart and Soul Organization. Kath Ingraham or Catherine Ingraham assisted us in the meeting that was held at the school earlier, continues to work with the Heart and Soul team. They reviewed this, they recommended. I think it's ready to go.
Excellent. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the town administrator to execute the Agreement for Services with CEI Consultants LLC to assist the Heart and Soul team with Community Heart and Soul coaching pursuant to our Heart and Soul grant agreement with a fee not to exceed $16,000.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Hand, seconded by Selectman Lake. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson?
Yes.
Selectman Ray?
Yes.
Selectman Hand?
Yes.
And Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes. Thank you all very much. And we next have the possible amendments to land use ordinance regarding LD 2003, however we're referring to that now. David, I'll let you take the wheel in this.
Sure. At one point previously, and probably in the non-agenda items, you folks received some guidance on this right after they passed the, the law went into effect, which is public law, 2021, Chapter 672, also referred to as LD 2003, which is the Affordable Housing Law passed by the legislature and approved by the governor last year. A fair number of the provisions go into effect for the town in July 1, 2023. It is very likely that our current land use ordinance has some provisions that will be contrary to what is in that law. And we need to prepare changes to our ordinance to be consistent with that law. I spoke with the town attorney's office about, is this something they really wanted to take on? They didn't think that was very cost effective. Spoke with another individual who lives locally that does some planning work who just undertook and took on a new job elsewhere, working for the state of Maine, didn't think he had the time and effort. Matt Eddy was here at your last meeting to discuss the services that MACOG or Midco's council of government could provide. Gone on my light that perhaps they'd be willing to do this. We don't have enough money to be a member. I talked to Matt about, could you give us a proposal? Would you be interested in doing this on a trial basis or, you know, prove your worth type of adventure? He said, oh, sure, we may be able to fund part of it with our technical assistance program. And then I dropped the bomb that I'd like to have it on tonight's agenda. He said, well, that might be a little ambitious, given what we have. So I kept it on the agenda to say, we can wait to see what type of proposal we get. We can pursue other avenues, which I'm not quite sure what they'd be at this point. Could just say, oh, no, just have the code officer do it. If we had a land use committee, we might have signed it to them. We don't. I think code officer probably pull out and say, if he was given this assignment. So hopefully, MACOG will come back with a reasonable proposal. And I'm more than willing to pursue anything else, but we need to keep this going because as cold as it is outside, June's going to be upon us soon. And we do have public hearing requirements and draft ordinance language and.
Did Matt Eddy give any indication when he might be getting back to us?
He said he'd most definitely be able to get it back so you could have it on your next regular meeting agenda.
I mean, I'm very enthusiastic about seeing this sort of trial run with. I liked his presentation quite a bit. It sounds really good. And I think it could be a really great. Yeah, just sort of soft launch of seeing what a relationship could be like with that organization. Any other thoughts or suggestions for David on this? All righty. I think stay the course.
You'll have it on your next agenda.
Super. Thank you. And then it is that time of year to establish the process and timeline for annual performance of the review of our town administrator. You have the form that we have traditionally used. Certainly, if anyone has a form that they would like to present to the board in the future, I don't think anyone would be opposed to considering that. You know, this form works. It can be somewhat confusing. But it leaves a lot of room for personal commentary. And I guess I would say I'm happy with sticking with this form. And my proposal to the board is that we would include in our last meeting in January in executive session to complete that in-person performance review of our town administrator. Any thoughts on that?
That all sounds great to me.
Yeah, and yeah, it's worked well in the past.
So would everyone be okay with the town administrator emailing out this week a PDF or Word doc form of this to everyone? And that I would ask that you give me at least a solid weekend, like when you get the packets? Please don't turn it in the day of. You know, I really need at least a couple of days. So our last meeting in January is when?
Twenty six. Sir? Sir, 23rd, yep.
Yeah, so if everyone could return either digitally or in paper format, to me, their completed forms that Friday. So I have the weekend because part of the process is reviewing and collating all of the scores and comments in a summary form for his records. So having it for that Friday prior would be excellent. And that gives all of us plenty of time to complete it. Does that work for you, David?
Yes. The one thing I will note that I will change before I email this out, the references to, well, the date's going to change, but also the references to Board of Selectmen.
Yes, sure. Yeah.
I think those references will be popping up in documents for a while. Program ones.
Yes. Yep. Sound good to everyone?
Yes.
Well into the next town administrator's term, probably.
Excellent. Let's move along to select person updates. Kern, do you have anything for us?
My update is that I have nothing to update.
Fair enough.
But we're looking forward to a Midco Solid Waste Order Directors meeting next month.
Boy.
Where.
Aren't we all?
It's going to be a busy one.
Yeah. Josh, anything to add?
Nothing further, no.
All right.
Just that on January 6th, the MMA Legislative Policy Committee will be meeting again to finalize the finalization of the legislative priorities that we all decided upon last time.
Sounds sublinely bureaucratic.
Well, wait till you see 75 people in the same room trying to be sublime.
Finalize a finalization.
Meet to meet about the meeting about finalizing the finalization.
Something like that, yeah.
Selectman Hand, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing.
And I have the same, nothing to offer tonight. We do have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I move that the board approve and sign the treasurers and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Garrettson, seconded by both Selectman Lake and Selectman Hand. Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, I do have a question.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, trying to figure out what the Celador Winery, the Christmas party thing. I can't remember.
Hoping nobody would see that.
And why wasn't I invited? I guess that's my question.
Yes. The Lincolnville Fire Department has an annual gathering for Christmas as part of their recruitment and retention program for firefighters, which is held at the Celador Winery. And the money for that program comes to us from the Lincolnville Community Foundation. So he comes into us and we pay the bill out to them. And I'm looking for my invite too. One has to join the fire department. And work, put your life at risk on a daily basis throughout the year, and then you get.
But Mike, you get a gold star for reading the warrant.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I was just tipped off.
No, it's great. That's good. It's good. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Kern, what's your vote?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Motion passes. And we do have a new agenda item, number 13, for the proposed emergency executive session. Will someone make a motion, please?
Sure. I move that the board enter into executive session for certain two, Title One, MRS A Section 4056E, regarding the legal rights and duties of the select board regarding possible litigation.
And I would just note for the record, before you vote, that it is highly unlikely that anything would, you'd come back in the public session and vote again. So if anybody is tuning in at home, you can pretty much be assured you're not going to.
No action, no anticipated action by the board tonight.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, Selectman Lake, what's your vote?
Yes.
Selectman Garrettson?
Yes.
Selectman Ray?
Yes.
Selectman Hand?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn, my vote is yes. We are now in executive session. Melissa, thank you so much.
Steve, I'm going to start the other Zoom.
Yep, I'll leave and join that one.